Good morning.
I wonder if it's not very strong though, it probably needs new batteries. Not working?
I think we had to plug it in. Did you put the...
Plug it in just with the laser. Battery. Huge battery.
It comes on.
You can try putting it in then if you want.
Okay. I just don't want to mess it up.
Excuse me?
Oh, what's going on?
Budget, right?
I don't know what's that for.
There's a lot of them.
A biggie heart.
Around and tell them.
Weird. See, that this button is opening that for some reason. Up media player. You can just close it up. Yeah, I don't know where the laser is.
Oh, we had great dinners.
Did you?
Yeah.
Where'd you guys go?
We had Greek food, we had Japanese food, we had Brazilian.
And how many Chinese? Cut it out and cut it on your teal? Wouldn't anybody cut me a teal?
Well, I doubt it when I got the bill.
Morning. Oh, gosh.
I know.
Roll one back there. Lead us in the flag.
Absolutely love to.
Good morning. Welcome to the September sixteenth Tulare County Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand as we salute the flag? We'll be led by Supervisor Vanderpool and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we will begin today with our Board of Supervisor Matters Supervisor Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saturday night, I attended the celebrity dinner that the leadership class of two thousand fourteen Porterville put on. Kind of a fun deal. Had limousines that took us around front and had people taking pictures. It was just like an opening night at some big production. And then we went in and we moved from one table to another. We set at three different tables. We had salad at one, we had main course and then dessert. So it's kind of neat seeing people and having people ask us questions. And of course, I said, hey, if you guys are going to ask me some questions, let's keep them to true, false, or multiple choice. I'd sure appreciate it. But no, we had a good time and I think maybe that might be something they might try again in the future, maybe another class. But it was great seeing their imagination and their ingenuity and putting this thing together. And I'll be attending their graduation this Saturday at River Island at three o'clock. Leadership class of two thousand fourteen, and I'll be presenting them with their certificates for that. Sunday, I attended the Bells Across America, celebrating the Constitution, the Constitution Week seventeen through the twenty-third, and gave them a proclamation. And of course, then Donna Johnson, who has been helping with the efforts in East Porterville with distributing water, she got their community service award, and then she got up and said a few words. So it was good seeing Donna there. And then everybody brought water to the event and loaded it onto Donna's pickup, and she took that with her to be distributed. As we see more and more people losing wells, not only in East Porterville, but throughout this county and as this drought continues. So that's a big, big thing. This Wednesday, I'll be attending a step-up meeting in Porterville, planning for our big event in October, which will be out at the Burton School. So looking forward to that. Thursday, I'll be at the Agribusiness Luncheon in Porterville. Tonight, I'll be at the, I won't be at the Forum in Visalia, I'll be at the meeting at the Forest Service in Porterville, where we're starting to go over the management for the rest of the Sierra sequoias and try to get a management plan in place to see if we can't put some management back into our national forests and stop these horrific fires that we've been having here lately, which are being blamed on global warming and the drought. Well, when you've got three or four times as many trees per acre as you're supposed to have, you're going to have trees dying, no matter if it's drought or not. So hopefully, we'll be able to come up with a plan that's going to help everybody. Then Monday, Monday night, I'll be at the Ag Building for the four H awards, four H kids. And that's always fun to see the four H kids throughout the county there getting their awards for their books and the different things that they have done. So that's kind of what my schedule is for the next couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ashida.
We have to go back a couple of weeks. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Sierra Nevada Conservancy meeting in Bridgeport, and we discussed the water bond. And the Sierra Nevada Conservancy was earmarked for twenty-five million dollars for forest restoration, which is a small amount when we actually need at least a billion dollars. I think what was upsetting, and I think I mentioned this before, is like the restoration of the San Joaquin River got ten million dollars for that project, and the Sierra Nevadas provides sixty percent of all the surface water for the state of California, and we only got twenty-five million dollars. Then last week, I attended a trip with the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council, which is the eight counties in the San Joaquin Valley from Bakersfield to Stockton. And it's the transportation agencies, and we come together with a platform of everything, of things that we all need in the eight counties. As an example, transportation bill has not been reauthorized in years, and it keeps getting put off. And I think we just told them, we're just tired of living six months with six-month extensions. We can't really plan our transportation programs with that type of legislation. We talked about bridge replacement. They took bridge replacements out of the transportation bill, and they put it in another category, which was kind of optional. So we want a dedicated bridge replacement bill. And if you have a chance, if you're coming back from Fresno, or going to Fresno, drive through Dinuba and look at the new bridge over the Kings River. I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous. It was needed. It's now four-laned, and that's what we're talking about, replacing those type of bridges. They have a bridge in San Joaquin, excuse me, in Stanislas County. And you rate bridges from one to a hundred, and a hundred's the best. They have a bridge that's rated two, and it has twenty thousand cars a day going over that bridge. So that's how important it is to the valley. We talked about goods movement. We need Highway ninety-nine to continue to be expanded. And we need to have a national goods movement program. And we lobbied for the fact that California will be submitting our goods movement plan to the to the Capitol by the end of the year. Another issue that came up was because of this drought, we've had some exceptional air days as a result of this drought that put us in non-compliance. And there should be a way that we have an exception when you have a weather event like we've had this past year. That's an act. It's called the Clear Act. So we support the Clear Act. The other issue we brought up was the ozone regulatory program. We're looking for a delay and an extension. What happens is you're supposed to redo your ozone plan every five years, but it takes you three years to get through to write the plan. So you're writing the plan where they're already putting out new regulations. So we're trying to extend this for ten-year period instead of a five-year review of the ozone plan. Last Monday, we also had a Water Commission meeting, which we discussed the groundwater legislation that's in the state legislature. And we had a conversation about the disadvantaged community study program, which I believe the board adopted last Tuesday. And in that plan, and I think I showed you last week, or two weeks ago, it is a plan that shows the four counties where the disadvantaged communities are, what their problems are. It's like a Bible. It's like a reference book. So when money comes available for certain issues on water quality, we'll be able to go right to that book, and we could go through all our communities and see which communities fit the projected grant program. Saturday Supervisor Cox and I attended the Heroes Program that was put on by the Tulare County Deputies Association, honoring a firefighter, emergency service worker, and a law enforcement officer. Great event, and hopefully next year, more of us can attend. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of us can't attend because we have college kids playing football, so we ended up making football trucks. But just wanted to say that last week after riding in the Tulare Parade, I was able to get over to the groundbreaking for a portion of the facilities being built by the Department of Education. The facilities will actually be the ones built for their, not their administrative offices, but rather for the my mind just went blank. What we have over here, the planetarium. And so that was a well-attended event. This coming Wednesday, tomorrow, we're going to be having a Northern County Community Roundtable up in Cutler Rosy Unified School District. We'll be focusing largely on water issues, water projects, governance, issues that are before us in our communities as we look at making transitions from different types of entities, having separate governmental agencies. Maybe we'll be looking at consolidation efforts. There's a regional project planned up there by the I'm sorry, by the Alt Irrigation District. And there's an issue about the governance of that particular project as well. We will be having an Airborne meeting this coming Thursday in Fresno. And a major issue there will be the, what we call the fireplace rule. It has to do with burning in the wintertime and emission limitations. It is one of the most effective rules that we have. It's also one of the most controversial because it affects so very many people. And initially, the thought of telling people they could or could not burn in their fireplaces with a wood stove in the wintertime, there were sort of life threats, you know, death threats actually given on that issue. But I will tell you that one thing I'm kind of excited about this time is that the focus here is going to be on getting folks to move to wood stoves that are EPA-approved. If you have a wood stove that is EPA-approved, you will actually have your, you will have an extended period of time to burn where other people will not be, will be curtailed. So you'll actually have more burn days, even more than you have currently. More burn days will be available to you because you've migrated to this much cleaner burning device. There will also be some resources devoted to that to help subsidize folks to, if they want to purchase that type of a wood stove. They can request support from the Air District. So that'll be a very interesting meeting on Thursday, I'm quite sure. And I believe that's about all I have to say. I do, on a lighter note, want to say that I knew that Kevin, our new intern, was going to fit in very well when I walked into my office this morning, and on my desk was a Hamford T-shirt. Now, the story there is that on Friday, Hamford played Dinuba High School, and they beat Dinuba. I mean, you know, that's unforgivable, but it happened. And anyway, to lighten my burdens, you know, Kevin Kurtz, our new intern, had provided me with a Hamford T-shirt, which I will use gladly to clean my windows. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. Just to go over a few things that happened last week before I get into the stuff coming up. Last week was the nine eleven blood drive in Tulare. That went really, really well. They actually were able to donate an additional fifty pints above what they did last year. And it is still the Central Valley Blood Banks, single largest event. So really, really a great, great event, and that did really well for the community of Tulare. And it was a wonderful ceremony, and I appreciate all those who participated. Also, the fair was fantastic. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to make it over there. The attendance was up, and really was a great, great effort. Hopefully, they can continue to stabilize their budget to move forward into the future. Coming up this week, there is a three-hundred club fundraiser for Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central California on Thursday, the eighteenth, and that's going to be in Fresno at Pardini's. That's a fantastic event, a lot of fun, and they raised a lot of money for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, which is an organization I serve on the board for, and they do great things in this community. And they continue to expand their services here in Tulare County as well. Also, the Farm Bureau is putting on an event, Bounty of the County, which is going to be held at the Seven Sycamores Ranch on Saturday, the twentieth, from five to eight. Another great event. I encourage everyone to attend if they can. I really applaud the Farm Bureau for showcasing what we grow here locally. And lastly, I have to say that being on the Board of Supervisors has been a great ride during my twenties, but on Monday, I'm going to be entering my thirties. So a little sad about that. I feel old. But beyond that, everything's going to be fine. So enjoy having a twenty-nine-year-old supervisor for the last week. So that's all I have to say. Sorry, guys.
There were several of us with gray hair who chuckled when you said you felt old. Last Friday, I was honored to be able to swear in our three newest officers at the Fire Department. It was a very good ceremony with family and friends. I wanted to thank the chief for giving me the opportunity to do that. I did kind of want to rat Supervisor Ashida out, though, on our event that we attended on Saturday. This is the second time that we've been at events together where last minute, he will buy raffle tickets, and then he wins. Literally, one time, I bought the second-to-last ticket, and he bought the last ticket and won. So he did very well in the raffle this year, and I, again, I did not. That's not a bad idea. We have, by way of announcement, for the Step-Up Challenge, which is the challenge between the high schools and junior high schools in Tulare County to see who could do the biggest and best service project and touch the most people. We have eighteen junior high schools and ten high schools that have, that are participating. We had the advisor training last week as well as this week, and so that's well underway. Tonight, I will be attending the Jail Ministries fundraising event and look forward to that event each year. It's a very good event, some very dedicated people. Take a lot of time working out in our jails with their ministry to the inmates. So I will be there tonight. That concludes the Board of Supervisor Matters. Next time is public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the board during public comment period, please step forward. State your, and these are on items that are not on today's agenda, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Marilyn Kenosha, Tulare County Ag Commissioner. But today, I'm here as the chairperson for Friends of Tulare County. And for those of you in the audience who don't know, it's a nonprofit organizations and a group of department heads that get together and find ways to collect money for a bunch of worthwhile causes. And I'd like to tell you about the Festival of Hope, which we're going to use all undesignated funds through the month of September and use them towards the Festival of Hope, September twenty-seventh, from ten to six P.M. at the Tulare Outlet Mall. And it's going to be an event sponsored by the Tulare and Kings County Suicide Prevention Task Force, whose mission is to reduce the rate of attempted suicides because we have nearly fifty people from Tulare and Kings County every year that commit suicide. So there's going to be a bunch of educational booths, trying to get rid of the stigma of pursuing services associated with depression or substance abuse, and events for the kids, and some free concerts, some pretty phenomenal chalk mural artists that are professionals, and then also folks from the community. And Noah Whitaker is here from HHSA. Did you have anything to add? He helps plan the event, so he's much more knowledgeable than I am.
The main thing is, you know, we do want to let everyone know that the event is completely free for the community. This is one of the only events like it that take place in the entire nation, though there are some other communities that we've been in discussion with that are attempting to emulate this. Fresno State is actually looking at maybe trying to start something for their campus. But it's free for the community. We do enjoy everyone coming out and just thank the board for the support that they've given to the suicide prevention efforts. The other, I think, noteworthy thing just to mention is one of our local programs is actually selected for submission to the National Best Practices Registry. So that's happening concurrently right now. And this week, we actually see the California State Association of Coroners is having their annual conference here in Visalia, in which we also presented yesterday on our lost team. So there's a lot of activities going on, and this is a phenomenal event for the community. I hope you're able to join us. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to donate, they can see me or Brooke Sisk from HHSA, and we'll get you connected. You can do that online as a one-time thing, or there are some of us that get payroll deductions, so you don't even have to write checks. It just comes out automatically, and it's tax deductible. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Marilyn. Morning.
Morning. My name is Mark Ariza, twenty-one forty-five South Conyard Court, Visalia, California. I'm here just to thank Mr. Rousseau for all of his efforts at child support. He's literally changing lives. The stress level's coming down. There are smiles on employees' faces. And even, they were a very productive group before. You're going to see a huge change in that department. Thank you again, Mr. Rousseau, for all your help.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board during public comment period? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our consent calendar. We have items four through eleven. Any board members wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? Any members of the public? Seeing none, we'll consider the consent calendar with one motion.
I'll second that.
Moved by Innes, seconded by Vanderpool. Please cast your votes, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, our next item is our public hearing, our final item, is our public hearing set for ten o'clock, so we are going to adjourn to closed session, and we will return at ten o'clock for our public hearing. And Madam Counsel?
Yes, sir. You have items A through C on your board's closed session agenda, and I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session. Be back at ten.
All the electors were preoccupied.
Well, yeah, I couldn't remember whether you had anybody back there, but they weren't on... At least they weren't adjourned.
Yeah.
(inaudible)
Yeah.
I... Yeah.
I just took that down.
Oh, yeah.
I have a different... I have my own tablet with them. One of you.
Good morning. We are back in open session. We did conclude closed session. While we were out, we will now take up our timed item, which is item number three, our budget hearings. And this will be a public hearing, and we'll open the hearing at the appropriate time. Mr. Rousseau.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation recapping the budget, and then we will get actually into the hearings. Okay, when we... We've been preparing this budget for a number of months, and as we are going through the goals and objectives and what is included in this year's budget, it just struck me that we're in the process of continuing to rebuild our fiscal house and prepare for the future. And so, that's the tone or the title of this presentation. And I figured out I can actually point, too. I've had this pointer for years, and I've never used it. So, I'll be pointing quite a bit.
They can't see it out there, though.
Well, I can point at some of these people, too.
Point at them.
The highlights of the 1314, before we go forward with the 1415 budget, it's always nice to look back at a very positive budget year. We were able to increase our reserves by two years. We were able to negotiate some salary increases for our employees.
Not years. You said two years.
Two years, sorry. God. Negotiate. I've dreamt about this all night last night. We were able to negotiate, and I wanted to take a second here to just talk about what we do when we get prepared for negotiations. We do a salary survey of classifications to look and see where our employees are at compared to their counterparts in our neighboring counties. We also look at what we've done over the last few years. In our case, our bargaining units had not received an increase since December of '08, just in time for the recession to hit, or the recession hit after that. So, we looked at the units that were at the table, and we were able to give a 3% increase to those bargaining units. We gave some equity increases to our attorneys and to some of our probation officers. We also gave the 3% to unrepresented. So, it was the first time that those groups had received anything other than steps and merits since December of '08. We also were able to increase workers' compensation. During the recession, we did a number of things in the county, including reducing our workers' compensation charges to our trust fund. We built a very positive, very strong trust fund up to that point. We reduced it from a little over 10 million to 5 million, and by doing that, it bought us time. It reduced the amount of cuts that we had to make. And now, we're in the process of putting our fiscal house back in order, and a part of that is getting workers' compensation back to where it needs to be, which is probably 11 or 12 million. So, for 1314, we increased it by 2 million. We also were, and this was a focus, and we met with the press yesterday, and they focused on this quite a bit. We were able to unfreeze some positions, and again, the challenge for us as a county is when future monies come available, to how many positions do we unfreeze, and how much do we give to our employees in the form of equity and cost of living increases. Lastly, we paid off our county Inventus Energy Management debt. It was about four and a half million dollars. When you net a penalty and interest and what have you, we saved about a quarter of a million in interest. It also freed up some spending authority in the budget to help some of our departments absorb the workers' comp increase. So, it was really done for twofold purpose. We also... So, we're rebuilding our fiscal house, and here we're preparing really for the future, because we are going through a generational change. You saw the two elected officials in the public safety arena talk about a paradigm change. New district attorney and new sheriff onboard after, you know, give or take 20 years. So, we are moving in a new direction, and as a part of that, we opened up some offices in Porterville for our district attorneys and our public defenders out off of Westwood Street. We are currently looking at a permanent location for that group. But just the new offices alone have improved the morale in those two departments. These folks have spent their entire career in the Visalia Courthouse, so anything outside of that with windows and, you know, parking spots that are relatively close has really benefited that group. The PIMS upgrade recently came to your board and was approved in Pete's hometown, or home city, I should say. And this is a major paradigm change. We're going to go from printing reports on dot matrix printers in Roland Hills office to, you know, client server environment, and be able to do a lot of things that we're not currently able to do with our system that was written in cobalt in UFO. We also, at the end of the year, set aside some money for our payroll system upgrade. We know we have to do it. We're trying to push it out as far as we can. We certainly don't want to do it while we're doing PIMS, although PIMS is a multi-year project, and we're still working through that. And then, lastly, and I'm really... Well, not two more to go. The Palms permit system has been moved along well. It's set to go into production, I believe, in October. I'm very excited about this, and hopefully, we hit that date. When we do open it up, we'll do a dog and pony show for this board. But if you were impressed with the new water website, you'll be extremely impressed with this program. It's going to change the way we do business, as well we should. We're going to be able to do our customers, we'll be able to go online, look at the status of their permits. We'll be doing code enforcement, environmental health, and as many things as possible in this program. It's very impressive and all GIS-based. And lastly, we've been spending a lot of time, a lot of energy on our two jail projects, predominantly AB900. We're going to be putting in $100 million worth of jail facilities in the next few years, and that's going to change the way, as well it should be, the way the sheriff does business. But it's been very painful. Thank God, we've got a good team. We're working well interdepartmentally, and I look forward to that project moving along. So, here's a global overview of the 1415 budget. You can see in total, it's very comparable to last year's budget, which was the first year that we exceeded $1 billion in total. The general fund is relatively static, for the most part, compared to last year. Special revenue funds dropped predominantly because the governor took some of our health realignment dollars to expand the Affordable Care Act. Capital projects, which I will touch on a number of times this year, we're going to be doing a lot. We're going to be rocking and rolling. I've got a list of things that we are working on. In addition to the jails, we're doing a number of improvements to our county facilities, which I'll touch on again a little bit later. The debt going down by 5 million really reflects our payment of that Inventus loan. We paid it off last year. And just to remind everyone that we made our second-to-last COPS payment last month. Our last debt payment will be next year in August, and we will be at least COPS debt-free, almost substantially debt-free, other than another, our Chevron, that we will be paying off early, too, eventually. So, that's really the take. Flood control hasn't really started to kick in. Those projects haven't kicked in yet, and once they do, those numbers will come down accordingly. The county general fund is the main operating fund. If you're not stretched early, required to be in a separate fund, you are in the general fund. This year, as you can see over the last five years, we've grown since the Great Recession incrementally, for the most part. I think the growth from 1112 through 1314 is predominantly in our social services department, and that trend continues. This is a kind of a... It's a very busy schedule, a little bit farther right than I would like, but that's okay. And what it shows is the approach that we took during the difficult times. And this is with... This includes one-time monies. If you were to take the one-time monies out from the budget, the criminal justice would be a little bit over 70%. So, essentially, 70% of our general countywide revenues go to criminal justice, and that's what we used as a barometer when we were making the cuts. As the pie got smaller, everyone's share got a little bit smaller, but the percentages, for the most part, stayed the same. So, you'll see criminal justice is at 66% for the 1415 budget. It includes a lot of one-time monies in the admin and fiscal area, and if you were to take the one-time monies out, maybe next year, we'll include that, the structural piece. It's around 70%. General county revenues, this really tells the story of the board's conservative approach to budgeting. We don't want to overdo our revenue estimates, because in case things turn around, the economy slows down and what have you, we don't have any cushion available to meet that. But you'll see the budgeted amount of general county revenues of 141 million. We are proposing or recommending that we increase that to 147 million right there. I'm using this for the first time. It's kind of cool. The actuals came in considerably higher. It does include some residual redevelopment. The Prop 172, which I'll show you right now, is you can see the trending upwards since the Great Recession in '08 and '09. What's important to look at is our revenue estimate for 1415 is approximately the peak of the housing boom, so it's a little bit below 25 million. And I've been hesitant to bring it up any further in case we do see an economic downturn from where it's at right now. But I still think there is a little bit of room, and hopefully, we can use some of that in future years. Local sales tax has been... Has recovered from the economic downturn in the '09 area. You can see each quarter has improved. And the second quarter's always been a very strong quarter for us, and it's extremely... It's probably as high as it's ever been in 2014. So, despite the drought, our businesses are moving along. The farmers are doing what they need to do, and I think I'd like to think our economic development activities are helping with that somewhat. The highlights of 1415, again, we're continuing to rebuild our fiscal house. So, the reserves, we're proposing to increase them another 2 million. Now, we brought financial policies to this board last fall. We talked about targeting a reserve level that's certainly higher than our 20 million. We're looking and we're shooting for approximately 100 million. We're well below that, but we're working our way towards it. You know, a lot of agencies exhausted their reserves, used their reserves during the Great Recession. We didn't have to. And now, to be in a position to build them up to a level that we all need them to be is a very positive thing. I mentioned the workers' comp earlier, how we had cut it from 10 million to 5. This brings it back up to 9, and we're getting there. We're starting to fill the holes that we dug for ourselves during the Great Recession. We really would have been in good shape if we hadn't had to absorb a $2.3 million take that the governor did. He took our health realignment dollars, which didn't affect counties as bad as most counties, because most counties used them just for health-related purposes. We unfortunately used a portion of that for our jail medical, so we had to make up that difference, and we were able to make it up this year, thank goodness. And now, we've got to control and manage the contract with Horizon, our provider. But this kind of shows you the position that we had put ourselves in going into negotiations going into this year. We could have, you know, we could have had the conversation about unfreezing positions or giving cost of living increases, but we weren't able to have that because the governor took 2.3 away from us. Again, we're continuing to unfreeze positions, not as many as we would like, and that's a conversation we'll have to have going forward. I think with... When you consider that we've increased workers' comp, which is ongoing, the 2.3 million is ongoing, we could have unfroze certainly more positions, and we'll hopefully get to that point. We went into negotiations this year thinking that we were going to have a flat roll, and then Mr. Hill's office delivered a assessed value roll at 5%, and we appreciate that, by the way. So, we were able to... We took a last-minute turn in negotiations, and we were able to do something for the bargaining units, the two remaining bargaining units that had not received an increase since December of '08. So, we looked at surveys. We looked at the bargaining units, what they'd received since December of '08, and the two remaining bargaining units that had not received anything were SEIU and our firefighters. And we were able to negotiate an increase for those folks. And we're currently working with the remaining units, and hopefully, we can get something done. And lastly, this year's budget proposes that we fully fund with ongoing monies the remaining portion of the community-based officers. And just a reminder to our board, the sheriff received a grant from the feds for the CBOs, and the requirement of the grant was to fully fund them for another year. We have no intention of letting those folks go. So, we use some of the redevelopment, ongoing redevelopment monies to help pay for these CBOs. They're important to communities. It's a way to kind of lessen the blow of redevelopment going away. And it's interesting how we've actually gotten more done with redevelopment gone than we got in some cases with it, but it is what it is. So, this year's budget recommends that we use ongoing monies to pay for the CBOs and for the marijuana strike force team. So, they will no longer be paid with one time. They're ongoing. Again, it's kind of a mini hole that we built when we started the team with one-time monies, and now, they're ongoing. We don't have to worry about that going forward. And here we are, preparing for the future. So, we put in, having spent some very difficult meetings talking about the AB900 project in the South County, just to play it safe, we've already come to the board and asked for additional monies to cover that project. I think it would be... It behooves us to put 3 million in contingency for both the AB900 project, the South County, and the SB 1022, just in case we need it. We don't plan on using it, and if we save it, we can use it for other things. But it's been a very difficult process, those two jails, but we're getting through it. We also... We're very excited. On October 7th, we're going to be having a space planning workshop slash presentation, where we're going to talk about the total square footage that the county uses for its services. It's over 2 million square feet. We're going to be having approximately 40,000 square feet, a little bit over 40,000 in these two Office of Ed buildings that are going to be coming online if they're on time with their project in July of 2015. So, that's a space planning presentation. On October 7th, we'll bring some recommendations for those two buildings. We have not made any firm commitments. We certainly have a recommendation, have ideas of how to use them, and I invite the departments to participate in that process. But we're excited. Again, it's 40,000 square feet. We're looking at potentially, you know, eliminating some outside leases where necessary, and so on. So, it's very excited. So, in that regard, we're putting 3 million in capital projects. We've already done some due diligence on the two buildings. They're going to need some work, and we're going to need some money moving folks around. So, we're excited about that. We're also in this year's 1415 budget. We're working with the sheriff's department. We've got a great relationship with the department. We are going to be replacing... They developed an equipment replacement plan, so this year reflects the first year funding of that plan, in addition to some other equipment that will help the sheriff do what they do best. We're also putting $1 million in for the purchase of radio communication infrastructure. You saw the presentation by IT. Uh, we're still working through some of the, the technology and what have you, but we know we need to, uh, continue with that process. What, you know, what wasn't discussed is we've, we'd already invested a, a few million dollars in, in, during the good times in repeaters and what have you, new radios, uh, the narrowbanding and what have you. And this is, continues that investment. And lastly, we, you know, we're, we're really focusing on our unincorporated communities. We're, uh, doing community plans. Uh, we're, we're doing Traver, Three Rivers, Goshen, Pixley, Early Mart. Uh, in fourteen, fifteen, we're going to be doing, uh, starting Terabella Ducor, Cutler, Rosy, Tipton and Strathmore. You know, our strategy is fairly clear. We're concentrating on the corridors. We're also preparing an economic development study. We're rocking and rolling. Uh, we're going to be doing more, uh, community plans in these two to three years and we've probably done in a long, long time. Um, in addition to that, we're doing, uh, we're doing a lot on the water world. As you can, we've received those two grants. We're continuing the water study, recently finished. We've got the, we've got our, our county mapped out with the, with the special districts. We're, we're starting to assess the cap, the capacity of our unincorporated communities. A lot of good, good work. At the same time, we're doing a nuisance abatement. We're getting rid of buildings that should have been torn down a long time ago. And we're partnering with the sheriff's department to identify the buildings that are used for, for public safety issues. Uh, what, what a novel concept. So it's working out well and it's apparently to the point of almost funding itself. Uh, we've been much more active in the TCAG world. So we're starting, uh, we're doing some complete street work, which will help position us for future transportation funding in the, in those communities. And we're looking at, uh, uh, Pixley, I believe, Traver and Goshen for those, those reports. And we'll be following up with the, the, the communities I just identified. I mentioned the CBOs early on, the community-based officers. They're an integral part of the, the community. Uh, they attend, um, the community meetings along with our fire folks. So our, I think our engagement at the community level is as strong as it perhaps has ever been. Uh, transit is in another important area. Um, you know, as you, as this board is aware, the, um, the rural transit is, is really skyrocketed. Um, uh, since, uh, expanding some of the routes, it's up four to five hundred percent. We're going to continue with that, with that process. Again, it really benefits unincorporated communities and quite frankly, the cities where those people, those people work. And lastly, our economic development efforts. Uh, I mentioned the studies that are being done on the two corridors, sixty-five and ninety-nine. Um, and, uh, I think with the sales tax that I just showed you, uh, for the second quarter of fourteen, I'd like to think a part of it is our own economic development efforts. So highlights of other funds, we're not just focusing on the general fund. There are, there are other things going on. Uh, the fire fund budget includes a, a purchase of one fire engine and patrol vehicle. If you group that with last year's purchase, they're going to be receiving two new fire engines and patrol vehicles probably sometime next year. Um, and we've, and they've, they've built their budget to where they can buy a new fire engine and patrol vehicle every two years to help replenish their stock. They've got a lot of old vehicles. They're paying a lot in maintenance. That will help in that regard. Uh, the transit fund is in the process of, uh, building or starting the process of the transit operations and maintenance facility. Uh, we're still working through the costs associated with that project. And at the same time, we're converting, uh, our fleet to, uh, C N G. And lastly, solid waste has been a major thorn in, in our side to a certain degree. Um, our office took control over that in May of two thousand and twelve. And, uh, we're fortunate enough to bring on, uh, Mr. Mr. Howard as our, as our director last fall. Uh, we're in the process of putting the system back together. We've reduced operational costs significantly. We're in the process of negotiating, uh, deals with our cities to capture all of their waste. Uh, we shut down Woodville temporarily until we feel we can, we need it sometime in the future. And a common, that combination of, of, of actions, uh, has brought our, our tipping fee down to our haulers to, uh, from thirty-one to twenty-eight dollars. Um, and in some cases a little bit lower for Anna County stuff. And we're starting to put our fiscal house in order and solid waste. Uh, so good job, Mr. Howard. So what the future holds, well, the future holds is, uh, I think we're going to see slow to moderate growth in the housing industry. Um, I think things are slowing down. I know the inventory is growing in the valley to a certain degree. That doesn't bode well on pricing. But I, I think we'll still continue to see some level of growth. And I'm looking over at Mr. Mathis and Mr. Hill in particular. Um, the budget challenges we have at the federal level are certainly SCAP and PILT. They've been ongoing challenges. Uh, SCAP has been reduced to, uh, from over a million to approximately five hundred thousand this year. And it will probably continue to decrease if it's not reauthorized and it doesn't look like it, it will. But we're working on that. Uh, the PILT is, uh, is in the, uh, House budget, but it's not in the Senate budget for some reason. Uh, the PILT is a general county revenue. It's three million dollars to our county. Uh, so it's very important that we, uh, that we continue the effort to try to save that. One positive note is our, the state budget's actually in pretty good shape. You know, when I kid around with people is that up until the governor's take on health realignment, um, they had taken basically everything they could. Um, and they're being very creative on, on ways on, on, on what's remaining, including realignment. Uh, but we're able to absorb the health realignment hit, which is a testament to the board's conservative approach. Um, and, um, when we start, when the budget, the state starts paying back some of the deferred, um, mandates, we're going to, we're going to recommend putting in reserve. Um, more importantly, and as we discussed more than what we'd like, is, is the drought is a big issue. Um, what it's, what it's, uh, what is its going to impact be to our county finances? Uh, clearly we're an ag-based county. Uh, ag, uh, properties are based on the revenue that they generate. So when you have farms that are following, um, uh, their crop or, uh, or actually, uh, short watering them, uh, it's got, it's got to have an impact on values and it's not going to be positive impact. So, um, retirement costs are going to expect it to increase. Our fund is, has essentially recovered the losses of the great recession. But the way the, the smoothing works, it takes, it's going to take a year or two for us to experience that. Uh, the board of retirement, just to remind, uh, uh, this board, uh, decided, we, we created a committee. Uh, we agreed to reduce the assumption rate in the, in our retirement, five basis points every year. So this coming report that they're going to do this fall, and which we typically receive in December, will have the first reduced assumption rate of five basis points from seven-point-nine to seven-point-eight-five. What you need to remember about that is every five basis points is generally about a million-dollar increase. Um, so we, the, the committee did recommend that, but it also had a caveat that if we, if we exceed that rate of return over a three-year period, we can suspend that reduction. So if you want to, if you're going to light candles at church, light candles for that. Um, this, we have exceeded it the prior two years. If we exceeded this year, then we can suspend that effort and, and it wouldn't break my heart. Uh, we, we still need to continue workers' compensation funding. We need to increase it up a little bit, but we've almost filled that hole. And lastly, once we, we finish workers' comp, we funded the, the, the marijuana team. We've completely funded the, uh, CBO, uh, group. Then it's future growth. What do we do with it? Uh, we're going to have to come up with a plan to unfreeze positions. Uh, the public safety departments have a lot of positions that are frozen due to funding constraints. Uh, so future, our future challenges is how do we balance future pay increases with unfreezing positions? So, uh, we will actually start the, uh, the hearing. Uh, before I, before I start with the, uh, we adjourn, I just want to thank and commend the department heads and agency directors for the help in presenting budgets, uh, that meet budget allocations. I really appreciate your efforts. Um, we have a, uh, excellent group of department heads. Uh, the silos that might have been in place in the past are no longer here and we work well together. And I don't, I don't see a reason to change that. I also want to thank my staff that has worked diligently over the last couple of months. It seems like no matter how early we start, we always finish at the end of August or early September. And, and, uh, so we're going to meet to talk about how to finish maybe a week earlier. Um, but there's a lot of good things in the budget as I've just indicated and, and I appreciate my, the effort of my staff that have worked really hard on bringing this together. The materials we will be working with from today are the recommended budget book and the agenda item, which provides for the order of items. Um, at this time, I will ask the chairman to adjourn as a Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as a Terabella Sewer Maintenance District.
Okay, we will now adjourn as Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as a Terabella Sewer Maintenance District. Mr. Russo.
Okay, uh, enterprise funds, which include the solid waste fund, but are used to account for activity for which a fee is charged to external users of goods and services. I'm asking that you adopt the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen final budget for the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and authorize the auditor controller, who's in the back of the room, um, to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the budget into final balance. I have no specific comments about this fund, but would be happy to respond to any questions from the board.
Any questions?
I understand we're going to take a motion later on. Is that correct to cover all these at one time?
No, we're going to.
We're going to vote for each.
We're going to vote right now.
Paul, can you?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Okay, before we do that, we're going to open the public hearing. On this item, anybody wishing to address this enterprise fund, uh, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Being done, have a motion by Supervisor Worley and a, or a, a motion by Supervisor Innes, a second by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes and the vote is unanimous. Thank you. We will now adjourn as a Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and convene as the Tulare County Flood Control District.
Okay, your board reviews plans and project statements throughout the year for the Tulare County Flood Control District. Clearly, this fund has had more activity in the last year or two than in the prior probably five to ten. Um, I'm asking that you adopt the fiscal year, uh, two thousand and fourteen final budget for the Tulare County Flood Control District and authorize the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the budget into final balance. I have no specific comments about this fund other than keep up the good work, Mr. Bond, and your sense of humor. Um, but would be happy to respond to any questions from your board.
Before we ask for questions, I want to remind folks I did close the public hearing and, uh, we'll ask for questions of, uh, Mr. Russo. Any questions? Okay, we will now open the public hearing for the Tulare County Flood Control, uh, District Fund. Anybody wishing to address the board, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing, bring them back to the board for action.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, and I'll gladly second that motion. I know we are in no way, uh, dealing with a flood right now, but, uh, I'm glad to see this entity, uh, pursuing projects so that when the flood does come, we're ready for it. So again, thank you, Mr. Bond and the Flood Control, uh, for all their efforts. So I will second that.
So noted. Moved by Worley, seconded by Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes and the vote is unanimous. We will now adjourn as a Tulare County Flood Control District and reconvene as a Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Russo.
Okay, um, enterprise and assessment district funds are used to account for an activity for which a fee is charged to external users or goods. The funds are, uh, the solid waste and transit funds, the L and M funds, uh, the Rosy Lighting Landscape, a Rosy Storm Drain, Poplar Storm Drain, Rosy Storm Drain, Early Mart Lighting Landscape, Tipton Storm Drain, Early Mart Storm Drain. A lot of storm drains out there, no water, but storm drains. Uh, Cutler Storm Drain, Teviston Storm Drain, Early Mart Storm Drain, a Rosy Storm Drain, Vi- Visalia Cotton Tail Storm Drain District, the Visalia Capsu Storm Drain, the Visalia District, the Visalia El Rio Road, Strathmore Road, the Porterville Road, the Visalia Acacia Road District, the Poplar Road District, the Visalia Cotton Tail Road District, Visalia Capsu Road District, the Goshen Road District, um, and the Goshen and Visalia District. Um, other than, uh, I've already commented on solid waste and its efforts to put, uh, put our fiscal house in order. Um, and transit, it's a lot of activity going on there. Other than that, I, I have no comments, but would be happy to respond to any questions from the board.
Questions? Continue.
Uh, the county service areas, number one and two, areas one and two, zones of benefit budgets provide for activities that are specific to areas and projects. It is similar to the, the, the districts I just mentioned. Users pay fees for these activities. They are, they were mispronouncing one when I first came here. Uh, Delph Colony Sewer, Delph Colony Water, El Rancho Sewer, Lemon Cove Water, Seville Sewer, Tonyville Sewer, Thuleville Sewer, that's the one I mispronounced, Traver Sewer, Wells Tract Sewer, Wells Tract Water, Yedam Sewer and Yedam Water. Uh, if there are no questions, I will move on.
Questions?
Okay.
Okay, um, this is a, these are, it's a slide of our internal service funds. Uh, they are used to account for goods or services provided by one department or agency to other departments and agencies. These funds, uh, operate on a cost reimbursement basis. The funds are, uh, capital projects and facilities, uh, the copier services, uh, custodial services, which we, we moved custodial their location of their office during thirteen, fourteen into new digs out by the old motor pool, fleet services, ground services. We also moved grounds offices over by the old motor pool during thirteen, fourteen. Mail services, print services and utilities. Under county councils, excellent purview is risk management. Um, and that includes general liability, uh, medical malpractice, property insurance and workers' compensation. Um, under human resources and development is dental insurance, self-insured dental insurance. And lastly is our, uh, I T department, information and communications technology with communications and information and communications technology. If there are no questions, I will move on.
Questions? Well, continue.
Okay. Um, the operating budgets are the core funds that provide services within, within the county. Uh, they are, you know, they include the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service and capital. Um, so the operating funds under the consent budgets are, and they start on pages three twenty-one through four hundred. Aviation, building debt service, capital projects, child support services, uh, community development block grants, our fire department, fish and game, health realignment, the home program fund, the housing successor agency under the rede- redevelopment, um, termination, indigent healthcare, library, mental health realignment, roads, social services realignment, tobacco settlement proceeds for our millennium fund and the workforce investment board. Uh, so if there are no questions, I will continue to move on. Okay, um, our final group of budgets are predominantly located, uh, they're located in the general fund and they are. The act commissioner, uh, sealer of weights and measures. We're going to be replacing the roof at the act commissioner's off, uh, office in fourteen, fifteen. The assessor clerk recorder, we've already remodeled, painted and recarpeted a portion of his department. We're going to be finishing that department this year. Uh, the auditor controller treasurer, tax collector, register of voters, by far the largest title in the general fund. Uh, we have, we've upgraded two of their offices and we're hopefully going to finish this year. We'll see. Uh, board supervisors, uh, capital acquisitions, central telephone services, uh, cops or citizens option for public safety, uh, cooperative extension, uh, county administration, county council, district attorney. District attorney, when Mr. Ward took office, we changed his carpet and repainted his offices. So some of the staff are in new digs in Porterville and the other, the rest of the staff had their offices upgraded. Um, general services, Health and Human Services Agency, uh, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. What, human resources, no, I'm sorry about that. Uh, miscellaneous admin, miscellaneous criminal justice, uh, probation. We'll be doing some workout and probation in some of the facilities this year. Uh, public defender, we're going to be hopefully getting to the public defender's office this year, certainly, may, maybe next year, but we're going to try to do it this year. Uh, and that's painting and recarpeting, uh, their Visalia offices. Purchasing, we're in the process of moving them over to, uh, the basement of the, the, um, the planetarium. And that, that work's going on. Um, and that'll free up some room for the auditor's office in the courthouse. Resource Management Agency, rural crime prevention, sheriff coroner. We're going to be doing a number of capital projects in the, in the, uh, correctional facilities for the sheriff. So if there are no questions, I will move on.
And continue.
Okay, um, let's see here. The general, uh, revenue budget makes up the bulk of the county's discretionary revenue. Uh, and I had a couple of slides on that. That's on page one ninety-three. Um, and then the contingency budget is on page two oh-one, um, and others as needed. But contingency, again, we're, we're recommending that we budget five million in contingency. That's a very conservative level. Uh, but it has, has really worked well for us and it will certainly help us, uh, deal with any unforeseen economic downturn that might happen. So, um, so, Mr. Chairman, remember? So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the final action requested today is to adopt the final budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the hearings for the enterprise and assessment district funds. The county service areas, number one and two, zones of benefit, special districts, internal service funds, the operating funds, and the general fund, amend the personnel class specifications, and compensation changes subject to meet and confer. So in addition to the bargaining units that I mentioned earlier, we did some targeted increases to some individuals, you know, we have a, we have a, an agency of 4,500 employees, and now and then we need to do targeted increases for various reasons. We did, we have some recommended in this year's budget. There are some increases for positions that quite frankly are hard to retain and to recruit for, and there were some other equity adjustments that have caused, you know, some havoc in the county, but they needed to be done. So in addition to the bargaining, we do some minor increases along the way. In addition to that, we're recommending a 5% increase for our esteemed county assessor clerk recorder, not because he delivered a positive assessment role, but because we, again, we look at all department heads' salaries compared to their counterparts in other counties. We do, we've done very little increases over the years since, certainly since December of 2008. This will be the second elected official that will receive an increase. We were able to increase the auditor controller last year by 5%. We're recommending that we increase the assessor by 5% to bring him closer to his counterparts, not because he delivered a positive role. And just to remind everyone that, you know, in our local ordinance, when we, when we give an increase to an elected official, one of the four, and the four are the sheriff, the district attorney, the assessor clerk recorder, and the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, do that, whatever that increase is, divide by four, and that, and the board receives that, that amount. For, for you folks, it's 1.25% this year. But that's how it works. We've, we have it as an action item on the agenda, so we want to be as transparent as can be. And I want to remind everyone that we are the only county in the valley that publicly notices increases for board members. No other board, no other board, no other county does this with the way we do it in terms of public noticing. And as painful as it could be, maybe we'll talk about changing that, but for now, we are being, trying to be as transparent as possible. Let's see here. And lastly, authorized our auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the fiscal house, fiscal year 2014-15 budget into final balance. That's it for me. Do you have any questions? I'll be entertaining.
We have any questions before we...
Question, have a comment, maybe?
Why is it Worley?
Just, you know, the way that this has been done Tulare County has been done for a number of years where we have consent, consent budgets, and I think it sometimes gives the perception that it's just very easily accomplished and done without any type of back, back and forth, give or take, conversations and so forth. But that takes place over a period of months, almost sometimes a year, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the way that we do this in Tulare County, and I appreciate our staff, our department heads, our elected officials, and our CAO's office for the way they worked together to bring this forward in a very positive way. Some counties will leave out a few million dollars and then let department heads come up and, and make a claim for additional dollars. And to me, it just seems like it only creates friction, creates competition amongst, amongst different departments, and, and sometimes leaves sort of a bad taste in the mouth of not only the elected officials, but also the board supervisors and the public. I, I just want to say that this is, I, I'm very appreciative of how we do this in Tulare County, and I, and I think we are doing a great service for the, for the members that we represent, the people we represent, and our staff are to be commended for the hard work that they do to bring it forward in such a way that, that we're able to take this kind of action today. I just wanted to make those comments.
Vice Vanderpool, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to also compliment Gene, great presentation and to the CAO's office, and a lot of work goes into this. And like Supervisor Worley mentioned, it doesn't just happen today with a simple presentation and a, and a vote. There's a lot of work that goes into this, and there's a lot of negotiation that does take place. But I, I think every department head knows out there that this board of supervisors, the CAO's office, wants to work with them and help address different needs that they may have. You can see whether it's upgrading offices, improving the equipment that the sheriff's department has, or working with the various groups that we're negotiating with. We're always trying to show everyone that they're a part of this team, and we want to work with them. I think this is a very fiscally responsible budget. You see that we're increasing our reserves, we're also paying down our debt and preparing for whatever the future may hold, and I think that's really great. But I also want to say thank you to not only the department heads, but also all county employees and staff. We have great people that work for this county. We've got great people that live in this county, but we're very, very fortunate to have dedicated public servants working hard for the residents of Tulare County, and I think this budget gives them the tools and resources they need to continue to do that. So I think that's really great. Thank you very much.
Chairman? Vice Ashida.
Last week when I was in Washington DC, I was with a supervisor from Stanislaus County. And as we know, when we went through the Great Recession, we had a furlough, but in many counties, they actually reduced the salaries of everybody that worked for the county. Stanislaus County is in, currently have negotiating their labor contracts, and they are just getting back to make the people whole, their employees whole, from the amounts, the reduction in their salaries due to the recession. There are a lot of counties and cities out there that have not really brought their salary levels back up to pre-recession levels. And we've been able to do very well in the last couple of years because we've been very conservative with our budget. So, kudos to our CAO for keeping us on track, but I, I believe that we're probably one of the, one of the counties that's best off in the state of California. And people may think we're really conservative with our, with our budget, but in the long run, it pays for all of us. So I also want to thank our employees who understood when recession hit that we did have to take some concessions. But thank goodness we worked our way out of that over a year ago. So, thank you.
Supervisor Innes.
I'd also like to thank Gene and his staff. You know, I know about the last month before the budget comes out, how hectic it gets when you're walking up and down the halls and seeing Paul and everybody kind of stressed, but thanks so much for your efforts. Thank you to all of our department heads, all of our elected officials throughout Tulare County, and our employees for working with the board, and the board is there to support you throughout the year. We're here to take the monies which we get, and we're stewards for the county, and give the county of Tulare all the resources we can and the services we can with the money that's allotted to us. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Gene, for a great presentation, and thank you Tulare County for letting us serve you on this board. Thank you.
One, one quick comment for me. Folks know I love to read. This budget book is an easy book to read. I opened it up to the DA because we happen to have the cover sheet and the financials side by side. In a glance, you can look at that department, how many employees they had last year, the year before, how many are going to be allotted this year, and you can look at the numbers. Just scanning across the bottom of the numbers, you can tell where, you know, the budget was two years ago, last year, what the recommended budget was, and what the final budget is for this year. A very easy read, much easier than many budgets, governmental budgets I've seen in the past. So I want to commend Gene for keeping it simple so that it's easy to understand, it's easy to read, and I would encourage folks that do have questions, it's literally just a few minutes to find whatever you need to find in this book. So with that, we will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to address the board during the public hearing on this issue, please step forward and state your name for the records. The public hearing is open. I think the department heads are just saying, just give us the money.
Right, write the check.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the board for action.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Worley, seconded by Ashida, and the vote is unanimous. We have a, a budget for 2014-15. Mr. Russo.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you for attending today. We have completed our meetings for the day, and wish you all well. We adjourn.
First of all, County, they have their budget here. They just go on multiple days.
Yep.
Yesterday, I asked you how much we wanted to build.
First of all, County, it's hard to say.